This time I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to order, and call upon Commissioner Ruben de la Rosa to lead us in an invitation.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking you for your guidance and wisdom and the support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussions allowing us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of the community. Fill us with grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that may affect the community. Continue to remind us that all that we do here today is all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of the trust for the greater glory of you and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. We're glad to have you here. I'm going to start with item one, which is a proclamation proclaiming September 17th through the 23rd, 2019 as Constitution Week. So I'd like to invite our guests up to receive that proclamation. Stand over here and kind of face out that way. You might think they're going to take your picture. This is great to do this every year and to remind ourselves of the importance of the Constitution. We appreciate your organization always bringing this as something that we need to do to remind ourselves of the importance of the Constitution of the United States and how much it really means to us even though we don't think about it every day. Maybe just a lot of times about it more often. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and republicanism dedicated to the rule by law. Whereas September 17th, 2019 marks the 232nd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States by the Constitutional Convention. Whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document at its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which were commemorated. The public law, 915, guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States, designating September 17th through the 23rd, 2019 as Constitution Week. And now therefore, I, Chris Boswell, am Baron of the City of Harlingen, hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23rd, 2019 as Constitution Week. And the City of Harlingen, and you hereby ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals and the frameworks of the Constitution had in 777 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us by this guardian of our liberties. So I present this to you all, and if you want to tell us about anything about your organization and we enjoy your company.
Well, this is our vice regent, and I'd like to add some words too, but we really appreciate the city, you know, helping us to celebrate this week. We had a display up in the Harlingen Public Library in the month of August because we couldn't get it for September, but it was a way of also just letting people know that it was coming up and hopefully they will remind themselves of the importance of this document and the individual rights. So.
Thank you from Lieutenant Tom Sparrow, Jactor, for bringing this to us.
All right. Well, congratulations and thank you all for always remembering our Constitution and helping the City of Harlingen to remember the United States Constitution.
We hope that the school district will also help with this.
I'm sure they will.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Item two is the presentation of the status of ongoing drainage projects.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. We want to just give an update. Sorry about that. An update report on the drainage improvements and how we're doing. First, I want to start with a little recap of the event that happened June 24th, where we received in the city 12 to 15 inches of rainfall in two and a half hours. The image that we see here is just a snapshot of what we encountered that day from being out there. We understand that there was a little bit more areas than that that were actually affected. We did cover those. We actually, we covered the entire city, but this was the areas at that particular time that were heavily affected by the rain and while crews were out there on the 24th through midnight covering. From the National Weather Service, they reported that the 12 to 15 inches and in some cases more than that of rainfall in three and a half hours. The area saw winds upwards of 65 to 75 miles per hour, and the Aurora Colorado crested at 22.67 feet, which is the highest level since June in 2018. And it was recorded as the fourth highest of record, which is very significant. Moving on, how we responded, the city created a, sorry about that. The city created an email address, and we put it in small business cards and we distributed, we posted it, we use social media. It was very helpful to us. This was something that wasn't done before. It is report hgn@myharlingen.us. It's still up now. We're still receiving information, but the main focus of this is to allow our residents, our citizens, and even our employees to take pictures. We know that a lot of people took pictures out there of events as it was happening. We used all that information. We put it into our G S system. We were able to map a lot of the areas as they were coming in. But more importantly, we shared that information with FEMA. This is a screenshot of their computer system when they came down, and the green dots indicate the areas where they did make contact with the residents. The orange are the ones that were not able to make contact on that particular day. This is a screenshot of, I believe, July 31st. And so they went back, but they were able to map it, they were able to gather information, and they continued. We know from FEMA themselves that they are still here. They're still collecting information, they're still talking to folks. They're going to be here until September 16th, so people can still go out and reach out to them. But by using that email, they also kept a record for themselves, for their insurance, and so on. Debris collection, as of August 20th, city crews working Saturdays and Sundays, we collected just over 4.4 million pounds of brush and debris, and we're still collecting, and that's in addition to the regular services that we provide. And we're going to continue to do so until all the debris is collected for our citizens. Improvements that we have been making, we are learning. We created a chart of all the improvement projects. This, well, I don't mean to say all of them, but these are ones that have been identified and charged and we're tracking. They're listing, they're on our website. I have here a link to the website, which should be working, which will take you directly to the chart, as I mentioned. But what I wanted to do real quick is just go back to the homepage to show everybody where they can find this one. So easily, we're going to keep them up there, we're going to keep updating them and providing information for our citizens. So on our regular homepage for the City of Harlingen, we have a popular links to the left full of tabs that people can easily go. The last one on the list now is a drainage maintenance map. You select that, which takes you to our Public Works, where we show an interactive map of our maintenance for our drainage ditches. It has a bar that says, click here. This is the current drainage improvement projects. As you can see, goes back to the chart. We select one from there, and it will forward you to information on that particular site. This one happens to be secluded acres drainage improvements. We give a description of what's going on and when it happened. We provide some aerial images of the area that was affected and what's being done, some additional information. Whatever we have, we're putting out there to let our residents know what is being done.
Can I ask you a real quick question?
Yes, sir.
On the drainage dishes, the ones that are not ours, are they up there? Like the ones that belong to the irrigation number five and the other entities, are they not up there?
Not yet, sir. We are working with them.
Can I suggest that just to put some kind of link that would link them to whoever, you know, that handles irrigation number five or four so they're done? Do you understand, because if a citizen's looking at their drainage canal and it's not ours, I think they need to know that, and then the easiest way is just, here's the information to call, you know.
And just, yes, sir. Certainly, we can do that.
Okay.
Certainly, we can do that. And so going back, you know, we have an interactive map.
Can I interrupt you just for a second? So when you go back to that prior one, the drainage improvement, that one? Just to identify, the number is a number of days?
Yes.
And then the other is the date in which you expect the project to commence?
To commence, that's correct.
Okay. So what are they making?
Right, so it started on this date, and it's going to take approximately this amount of days to be completed.
In the case of that one, 99 days?
Yes. And then we continuously update these. If things change, we get rain days and so on, and we're trying to keep up and update it as it moves on.
And then the link on the, right there on the left, takes you to the actual project, the dialogue that came from the other. You go to the, before you got to here, it showed all the different interactive maps.
Well, the interactive map, for now, it's, we are, and I'll select it, and that takes you to a map that will provide links to particular drain ditches that are being worked on, and it gives you a status. First, it gives you the name, and this name is how we recognize it, is how we identify it on the field, and then we provide a status of what was done to it on this particular week from August 9th, I'm sorry, from August 5th through the 9th, the three that more was out there. We provide a picture of what actually was out there, the equipment that was used. And so this is a retention pond on Hickory Hill, and so that's why you see a big, large area, but it's actually a lowered area.
And on the map that was below that one, you have a PDF describing of your project and where you're at with it. Because this one is the maintenance, the top one is the maintenance.
Yes, sir.
The one below it.
This link right here.
Where did I see that? Oh, maybe it's there that I read. Never mind, never mind. I got it.
And again, this is something that we're working on. This is something new that we're doing, so we're constantly tweaking, trying to find better ways. We're getting feedback, and obviously those links is a great feedback, as Commissioner Rivera suggested, and we'll definitely look at that and be putting that up there. So moving on, drainage improvements, storm drains that are televised, what you see here in this map, in this purple lines or different color lines, those are all underground storm lines throughout the city. And this is just some of the dates of some of the areas that have been televised, where we have that remote control camera that we put into the drains. We're looking for shifting, we're looking for cracks, we're looking for blockage. We've done Cinderell Road, Green Jay, King Fisher, this was all in the Hickory Hill area. We started doing downtown, and we did encounter around 70 feet, we encountered a lot of mud and debris that was stuck in there, so now we bring additional equipment. We're flushing that out. We're hoping to be back out there again and finish the downtown area, and then this is some of the dates that we are, some of the streets and dates that we are scheduling to do next. And again, this is going to continue to be changing and continue to be updating as we continue these lines in maintenance. In addition to that, we saw secluded acres, part of the town hall meetings that we had. There was an issue concern about the berm that it was too low and water had gone over, so we have sent our crews out there. They have already started this, already happened, and we're continuing to improve this area. We have begun to re-profile the ditch to increase the width, and the material that's being taken out is put in back on the berm, so we're using the material that's already there. We're going to go back and look at it again and make sure that we're hitting the right volume. If it needs to be readjusted, we will make adjustments as we go. In addition to that, we're in a partnership with the Cameron County Drainage District Number Five and the Harlingen Irrigation District Number One, and we thank them for partnering with us. These are all of the cul-de-sacs and secluded acres and the drainage pipes that go into that canal. And so we are partnering up with them and doing improvements to include the installation of floodgates on the storm pipes that discharge storm water from secluded acres. And so this is just a sample of the floodgate that we're looking at. The floodgates are intended to keep storm water from the drain ditch to flow back into the subdivision. So what was happening when the level was rising too much, then, you know, it equalizes and it was going back, so we're hoping that this prevents that, keeps the water in the canal and keeps pushing in the direction that needs to go out. There is a high demand for this type of flaps, so we have been told that we're looking at about a 10 to 12 weeks for the floodgate. We're going to continue to do our maintenance. We are calling that vendor constantly to kind of squeeze us in there, and as soon as we can get those in there, we're going to schedule those to get installed, and that will be updated as well.
Is this an experiment, see how well they work, or are we going to start using these? I know we have other areas that experience backups when, like the Aurora Colorado gets to a certain level.
Right, so these flaps are marketable, they've been using them in other areas and stuff. We haven't used them, obviously, in this particular area here, and so we're trying them here, but we're very confident that they're going to work just because of the way that they hold it back. And so with our partnership with the Cameron County Drainage District Number Five, they are currently excavating two original stormwater detention ponds off of Breedlove Road. This would be one and two that are in blue here, and then the one in yellow is one that's going to be done at a later time. And these pots, ponds, excuse me, are downstream along the main drainage canal that services secluded acres and Spanish acres. As you can see by the arrows, they're also taking some other areas that's coming down and is feeding, and we're hoping that these ones will get and retain a lot of that water and hold volume. They're designed to take water from the drain ditch, and these two ponds will have a storage capacity of about 78 million gallons. If you can imagine a million of gallons, that's a lot of capacity. So the number one is approximately 13 acres, number two is 16 acres respectively. They're about eight foot deep, and so we're hoping that they hold water and kind of pull it out faster and stage in the area. That is the intent for these. The next one after, in about 12 months or so after these two are completed, they're working on another detention pond just north of that that will continue to support both of these, but will bring additional water from other areas, not including here, but from other areas of the city, other subdivisions, and work similarly like that. And so this is just a great partnership that we have with the Cameron County Drainage District and the Harlingen Irrigation District. This is just another area, so to show that they're already working, they're already being dug, this is kind of like a standing level view, and this would be more like an aerial view from our drone. This would be pond number one and pond number two. So this is the 13 acre one, this is the 16 acre one approximately. And as you can see, this height right here, that's about eight feet in height, eight feet deep, so it's holding quite a bit of water. Continuing with the partnership, work is scheduled to start on the 13th Street Drainage District located on the west side of 13th Street extending almost 10,000 linear feet. The scope of the work will include the widening of the ditch and increasing the size of one culvert crossing. And the Harlingen Irrigation District Number One will provide the majority of the labor and equipment, and the city's cost share is $100,000, $500,000 to cover the portion between Matt's and Montezuma. Another project that we're working on is the widening of Dixie Land and Drainage Ditch, and the scope of this is also to widen the ditch to increase the size of four culvert crossings in the area. And again, Harlingen Irrigation District is, will be providing the majority of the labor and equipment and materials, and the city has a cost share of $342,000 to cover the portion between Lincoln and west of Dixie. And both of these projects are expected to be completed sometime in March of 2020. In addition, the 9th and 13th Street Storm Drainage Project, the scope of work for this one will include the removal of existing storm sewer drain pipes, and then where they're going to be replaced by 40-inch concrete pipes. 14 manholes and 52 inlets will also be removed and replaced. On August 7th, the City Commission committed to fund this project under the fiscal year 2019, 2020, and we expect the contractor to begin construction in early November, and this project will take five to six months to complete. And as you can see, and I think we're familiar with this one, it's already been presented The Halpin Road, again, this is part of the town hall meetings that we had. The scope of work is to reestablish a roadside ditch on both sides of the road from Business 83 North to the main drainage. Some driveway covers will have to be removed and rebuilt. In addition, we identified some driveways that were created without cover, so those are going to have to be redone. City crews are scheduled to begin excavating the area on September 16th, and the project we expect to be completed around October 11th. Another project is the Becky Lane Storm Drain. This one is over here in the Treasure Hills area. Public Works crews have done a lot of work in this area already. They have removed about 184 linear feet of curb. In addition to a 24-inch concrete pipe was installed on Emerald Lake to carry the water, and as you can see by some of the pictures, they're working on that. And so they have reconstructed the curb there. We rebuilt some driveways, and crews are currently installing the box in there. Unfortunately, we've had a little bit of rain, and so those ones have been delayed a little bit, but we expect as soon as it clears to go back in there and install those and have this project complete. The Jefferson Drain Ditch, again, this is a side view. This is Bonham Elementary. On June 24th, it resulted from additional damage to the concrete panels. We worked together with our Harlingen ISD, came up with a map to reroute the traffic, creating this Jefferson Street for this portion between 21st and 25th into a one-way, creating additional temporary parking for their faculty and allowing the parents who used to park in this area to now redirect and park over here. This is an alleyway that we improved so that the flow of traffic can continue around the school. It's working very well for us. The school is happy, they're still getting their kids in and out. In addition, the city expects to award this one in, this project in September, allowing the repairs to begin in October with a completion date of about December 2019. And as you can see, some of the, some of the conditions of that, the force of the water. Lake Drive, this was one that public crews went out there and they removed two undersized curb inlets. We have had some issues in the past before, and citizens had brought that to our attention, and so those were replaced by bigger three-foot by four-feet great inlets, and a second 18-inch concrete storm drain that was installed across. This project is already completed and done. Beckham Road, the same, when we were out there, we noticed and identified that the flow was not going in some of the areas of Beckham more closely here, and here indicated by red, which was some great inlet that was just completely covered with dirt and debris. So crews have gone out there and removed and reset the existing storm drain pipes on the north end. This is over here, which is this side. And the pipes on the north end of the roadside ditch, this is where the roadside ditch discharges onto the main drainage ditch. Work was completed on July 26th, and the crews will continue to monitor this because since it got clogged up before, we want to make sure it doesn't happen again. Altas Palmas, again, we noticed that there was an undersized PVC pipe. Crews went out there, replaced that eight-inch with an 18-inch diameter corrugated pipe, and the area where the pipe discharges onto the main ditch was also cleared of any vegetation. Again, this work was, is expected to be completed, I'm sorry, was completed, and this is the end result of it. Now we have a clear passage. During hazard mitigation and grant applications that we have out there, these are just the latest ones that we have pending information on. They were all submitted to the Texas Service Storms, the grants, I'm sorry, were submitted under the DR 4377, Texas severe storms and flooding. The grants are assist, are to assist the drainage improvements throughout the city by increasing ditch capacity and upgrading existing storm sewers. The city would, the total amount for the funding is 10 million, 10.2 million, and the city would have a 25% match funding in the amount of 2.5 million, should they all be awarded. And this is just the, a little bit more detail of the applications that they submitted in the general area. The 5th and 7th Street Storm Sewer Improvement Projects, which is known as System 021, the city is proposing to mitigate the problem of roadways and structure flooding by making improvement to the existing storm sewer system by increasing capacity to the drainage system. And again, the areas in yellow are the areas that we are proposing to improve, but the areas in blue and purple is all the area that it services, that this improvement would service. So we are looking at a lot of subdivision area, residential, some commercial that's coming in. The Jefferson Street Improvement Project, which is System 124, and again, the city's proposing to mitigate the problem of the roadways and structure flooding occurrence in the surrounding subdivisions, and we are trying to increase, improve the existing storm sewer system by increasing capacity of the drainage system. And again, this is the area that, this is a city lake, so this would be east of the city lake, a little bit of Tyler here and stuff. I believe this is Business 77 here and Morgan, as it connects to Peter Piper on this area. The 24th Street Storm Sewer System, System 007, again, the same, we are, the city's proposing to mitigate the problem. We want to make improvement to the existing storm sewer from here to here. This is the Jefferson Ditch. This is where the Peter Piper is, so we have, it's picking up from Morgan to the east and then Austin all the way south to Jefferson. It's a large area that we, you know, if we get this grant, it would make great improvements. The Business 77 Storm Sewer Improvement, which is also known as System 139, and again, this is all in the same general area, Austin Road, Business, Austin South, all the way to Jefferson. Again, this is the Peter Piper. So all of these four systems essentially connect together. This area right here is also, has a large retail, so we would be assisting the retail, residential, our streets. I mean, we're really hoping to get these ones and continue to improve. I can answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Rodrigo? Or Dan?
Thank you for the presentation. Very informative.
Thanks. Well, I just want to say how really proud I am of our city staff and how our city manager and our entire organization has responded to the floods that we had in June. And while we've had a good master drainage plan that we've been working through over the last 10 years, and while we've made some good strides towards that, I think that we listened to what people said at the town hall meetings. We also listened to other information that came in from our residents and have really tried to redouble our efforts and strengthen our efforts to address issues as they came up. And I think the additional work that has gone into this, some of these projects are small, like $8,000, and some of them are hundreds of thousands, and some of them are multi-million dollar projects, and we still have others that, as you noted at the end of the presentation, are pending as we wait, as we grant application decisions. But it's an indication of the work that our city staff is doing to remedy and improve our drainage situation in the City of Harlingen. And I think that what you all have done is really innovative, it's been responsive, and it is a stepping up of what we need to do with regard to our drainage improvements in our community. And so I want to thank, thank everybody and recognize everybody for the hard work that they've put. they put in, not just after the storm and in response to it, but in getting these projects underway and moving more quickly and thinking about how we can do things differently to improve our drainage situation. So it's really, I think, worth recognition and praise. So thank you all. Thank you for that report. We're not done, we're not done with what you showed us, and when we're done with what you showed us, we're still not going to be done.
That's correct.
But we're going to keep working at it every single day. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Item three is the approval of the minutes of the special meeting of June 24, 2019, and the regular meeting of August 7, 2019. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Consent agenda, item four, items four A through D, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed, motion carries. And we're going to, we're going to move a couple of these items around without objection. I'm going to take item eight first, consideration possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading adoption, adopting the City of Harlingen's budget for fiscal year 2019-20.
Thank you, Mayor. Texas Senate Bill Number 656, effective September 1, 2013, requires the city commission's vote to adopt a budget to be a record vote. Exhibit A displays total proposed revenues and expenditures and estimated fund balances by funds for fiscal year 2019 to 2020. Total proposed revenues in Exhibit A totaled $77,585,220. Total proposed expenditures totaled $79,247,357. Staff recommends approval of the 2019-2020 budget.
Okay. I'd like to ask the city attorney to read the caption of this, please.
An ordinance adopting the revenue and expenditure budget for the city of Harlingen, Texas for the fiscal year October 1, 2019, through September 30, 2020, in the amount of $77,585,220 and $79,247,357 respectively, providing for publication of the caption of this ordinance and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so we're taking in ballpark 77 million. We're going to spend 79, so we're going to spend $2 million more, correct?
Yes, well.
And so that $2 million is coming from our rainy day fund?
From various funds. That 77 million is all inclusive of not just general fund, special revenue funds, as well as enterprise funds, and internal services funds.
Okay.
When adopted, it needs to be, or voted on, I'm sorry, it needs to be a record vote.
I'd like to note that we had, we've had the, we've had our budget package since early July, and we've had two workshops on the budget and two public hearings, one public hearing on the budget. So is there any of this other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You have to be record vote.
Commissioner, Commissioner O'Reilly?
Aye.
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 All right. Motion passes. All right. And we're going to go to item six, which is consideration possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading by record vote adopting the 2019 ad valorem tax rate for maintenance and operation for fiscal year 2019-20.
Thank you, Mayor. The adoption of the city's tax rate is done in two parts. The first part is the maintenance and operation tax rate, which is being proposed at .518100 cents per $100 valuation. Together with the interest and sinking rate, the total proposed tax rate for the city of Harlingen is .63, 63 cents per $100. All legal requirements have been met for the adoption of the tax rate. Staff recommends approval.
I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance fixing the ad valorem tax rate for maintenance and operations for the city of Harlingen, Texas for the calendar year 2019 at .5181 per $100 valuation, providing for publication and ordaining other matters relating to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
It is also a record vote.
Call for a record vote, starting down here with Commissioner O'Reilly.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item seven, consideration possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading by record vote adopting the 2019 ad valorem tax rate for interest and sinking fund for fiscal year 2019-20.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second part of the tax rate, which is the interest and sinking rate, which is proposed at .111900 cents per $100 valuation. The interest and sinking portion of the tax rate pays for the city's debt service for the fiscal year 2020. Together with the maintenance and operation rate, the total proposed tax rate is 63 cents per $100 valuation. All legal requirements have been met for the adoption of the tax rate, and staff recommends approval.
Is there a motion to adopt, oh, I need, ask the city attorney to read the caption to the ordinance, please.
An ordinance fixing the ad valorem tax rate for interest and sinking payments for the city of Harlingen, Texas for the calendar year 2019 at .1119 per $100 valuation, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. We'll start with Commissioner O'Reilly.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Now we're going to go to item five.
Mayor, Commissioner, I just want to point out that this is Seth Gil's last budget presentation. He has accepted a position at another city, and I'm not going to say the name, but we wish him well. He's done a fantastic job for our community, and certainly appreciate all his efforts.
So we need to lock the doors.
So, best of luck to you.
Thank you, thank you, Dan. It's been great working for the city of Harlingen, and working with great, great leadership and great finance director in Elvita Trevino, and great management. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Commission.
It'll be sad to see you go. The other city doesn't deserve to have you.
No, and I did ask him if he'd deliver a letter for me to the other city manager, but he said he wouldn't.
Can I send him a picture?
All right. Thank you, Sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, now, item five, addressed by Hilltop Security regarding refinancing opportunities for the city of Harlingen.
Aye.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, Mr. Serna, it's a pleasure to be back in Harlingen this evening. The item I have to discuss today is a potential refinancing opportunity. If I may ask you to please turn to page three in the presentation I put in front of you. As I generally do when I come to visit, I think it's always important to kind of start off on where we are from a market perspective, and we are in an extremely unique interest rate environment and market conditions at this time. This is the bond buyers index of 20 municipal bonds, and this goes back over a period of 20 years. This is an index that comes out every Thursday, and while this is not the rate that Harlingen would get, I think it is very helpful to look at and see what the market trends are doing. If you look at the chart, we go back when we're at the late 1990s, we were at rates that were over 6%. The rate that came out last week was 2.97%. If you go back and look at this chart, from a historical perspective, when we were in July of 2016, we were at what was then the lowest interest rates that we had had since the 60s. This chart actually lags a little bit, but the rates that we've seen over the last week or two are now lower than the rates that we saw back in July of 2016. So we are now at the lowest rates since the 60s, and over 99% of the time, interest rates have been higher. As a barometer to reflect that, I had a bond sale for another city that I work with last week, who had sold bonds at approximately the same time in 2016, and the interest rate that they received last week was lower than the rate that they had in 2016. On the next page, we talk a little bit about the same chart, but I wanted to show you what it looked like just over what had happened over the course of one year. So if you go back a year ago, interest rates were just slightly below 4%, and now we're looking at the same index, which is just slightly below 3%. So in a one-year period, we have seen a reduction from just under 4% to under 3%, a 1% movement, which is very significant. On the next page, there's one other highlight we wanted to talk about, and that is what the yield curve has looked like. In this historically low interest rate environment, we are seeing a compression in credit spreads. So the bottom line shows the AAA, the red line shows the AA, which would be reflective of the rating that the city would get with your double A plus double A minus rating, and then it goes higher. To not only reflect a market anomaly that we've seen from compressed interest rates, we saw last week, another one of the cities we work with had two competitive sales. One was for tax-exempt bonds, one was for taxable bonds. They both had a 20-year final maturity, and the difference between the two was one basis point. And we're just in, and if you step back and ask why, because normally there's a much more significant, we've got some inverted parts of the yield curve, we have a lot going on from a geopolitical perspective, there are just a number of things that are going on in the markets that are causing this unique opportunity for interest rates declining and potential refinancing opportunities. If I may ask you to turn to slide six. The city issued bonds in 2010, they were certificates of obligation in the amount of $3,090,000. Currently, beginning in 2020, there will be $1,865,000 that is callable and maturities 2021 through 2030, and those had interest rates of 3.5% up to 4.125. At the bottom of the schedule, we show the maturity schedule and the interest rate, and all of those bonds are callable on February 15, 2020. Moving on to two pages from now, we look at what the existing debt is, because whenever we bring to you refinancing opportunities, we try to look at it not only within the context of that specific bond issue, but we also want to look at it within the perspective of the overall debt profile. So on what we have on page eight, we show the city's outstanding debt, and you can see that it's relatively level from 2020 out through 2024, and then it starts declining. So one of the things that we want to talk about today, not only is if you're potentially interested in a refinancing, we wanted to talk about where we think it would have the most benefit for the city. So what we've looked at on slide number nine is a refinancing with the savings upfront. Basically, what we would suggest, if this is something that the city is interested in, that we target the savings pretty much from 2021 to 2024, where it would have the most impact. When we ran the analysis based on rates as of September 3, the refunding par amount is projected to be $1,730,000 with gross savings of $165,709. And when we target the savings between 2021 and 2024, on average, that is $40,000 a year. When we take the present value calculation of the savings, it's slightly over $155,000. So on a present value benefit, it's over 8%, 8.324%. And so when we looked at the true interest cost, 1.936. So if you think about it, you would be trading an interest rate of approximately 1.9% for coupons that are 3.5 up to 4 1/8. And we have a chart underneath, so you can see where we're targeting the savings on that particular bond issue. On the last slide, I wanted to talk a little bit about the timing considerations. With the passage of the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act in December of 2017, advance refundings are no longer permitted. So you can only do a current refunding, and current refundings can be done, you don't have to do it exactly on the call date, but it has to be within 90 days of the call date. So with the February 15, 2020 call date, the first day that the proposed refunding could even close would not be until November 18. You can even price these bonds, the first possible day you could price them would really be about October 17. So we just wanted to highlight that, that it has been very much a change in the markets, not being able to look at advanced refundings. So this really is sort of the first opportunity that you would have to be able to consider this refunding. You can refund it as early as I mentioned, or any time between now or February, or even thereafter, if that would be the desire of the commission. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So your, I guess disclosures, I'm securities licensed as a financial advisor and a financial analyst. What we're going through is totally bizarre. Europe and much of the world has negative interest rates, which is, and the economists would know can't happen, until it does. The U.S. may be heading there. No one knows what this means. Everybody can make guesses, but nobody knows why it's happening, or what are the repercussions and the law of unintended consequences. Interest rates have plummeted, just in the last two weeks, but in the last, what, four or five months, plummeted. So it would behoove us to refinance. Now, you're talking about October, that's when you would price these, so the interest rate would be different from the theoretical interest rate presented today, is that correct?
Yes, sir, Commissioner. We actually took rates as of the 3rd, and in order to provide a cushion, we added 25 basis points to them. So we hope that they are conservative, but that we would be subject to whatever the prevailing interest rates are at that time.
Right, and unless something drastically changes in this country or in the world in the next five, six weeks, interest rates are going down. That's the bet.
It's, to your point, there is globally $17 trillion of debt that's got negative yields.
Yeah, that's, I mean, when I try to explain this to people, they go, huh?
You mean I have to pay you to take my money?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
On slide eight, you show our current debt, which is at $32 million. But you're only addressing one of those lines, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So we know where we're at, and we're just proposing one of, only one of, which is going to be the...
The one that's callable.
The one that's callable, which is the two, which is, the current balance is 3.953?
No.
The current balance is now down to $1,865,000.
So it's not on this chart?
No.
It's on page six.
I'm looking at this chart, so that's one prior that you already rolled off of this chart.
So what we did is, on slide eight, that is a snapshot of the entire debt of the city of Harlingen that is payable from ad valorem taxes. So we looked at if you do level savings in the bond issue, but then we step back and we looked at your overall debt profile, and because you've got a little bit of a plateau and then it declines, having savings where your debt service is higher actually brings better value to the city than having savings where the overall debt service is much lower. We were just trying to optimize the structure.
And so...
I understand. I just didn't, I didn't know if you were trying to take 2019 through 2027, and we're going to call all of that. That's why I asked the question, because I was just going to make sure it don't match. But we're talking just through the one that's current that's callable.
Yes, sir.
And so what is the maturity date of these particular bonds you're talking about?
Yes, sir. They mature 2021 through 2030.
But the one you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. So are we going to do a 30-year bond, a 20-year bond, a 10-year bond, a three-year bond?
What we would suggest is not extending the final maturity at all.
That was the answer I was looking for.
Yes, sir.
We're just going to...
This would be a fairly modest annualized savings over the next five...
And included in the savings, I'm sorry.
This would be a fairly modest savings over the next five years, principally between '21 and '24.
Yes, sir.
I mean, primarily, principally is a confusing word, since we're talking about principal and interest, but primarily during those four... '21 and '24.
Yes, sir.
I mean, primarily, principally is a confusing word, since we're talking about principal and interest, but primarily during those four years, but be a total, be a total savings of $165,000 to do the refund, refunding of the bonds. So this is just a presentation tonight, it's not, we're not asking, nobody's asking for any action. It's just a kind of a, this is an opportunity that we could take advantage of to save some, some money. I mean, it's, you know, $40,000, you know, $43,000 in '21, that's, that's somebody's salary somewhere.
That's some money.
Yeah, that's real, that's real money. And over the life of the $165,000 is real money, most of that realized upfront, you know, in the, in the beginning years. So that's certainly something to consider. It's also something, it's also, you know, good information, though, that if you look at our debt picture, you know, we're, we're down to very little debt in eight years, and we go from about $4 million in debt service to $350,000 in debt service in eight years, which I think is a pretty good indicator. I think we're in pretty good financial condition from a debt standpoint. So that's a, that's good information. It's good information to see, so I'm glad to have this information. I appreciate you presenting it to us. Does anybody have any other questions for Ann and the...
It's a great opportunity, and I want to thank Ann for all the work that she's done. Anytime interest rates drop like this, and we have an opportunity to refund one of these bonds and take advantage of some savings, we need to...
Do you want to ask if the City Commission wants to bring this back for action now, or you'll think about it?
We could bring it back as early as the next meeting. Will you be available to bring it back?
I will certainly check. If the city is interested, generally the way that refundings go, because they are subject to the prevailing market conditions, we would come back and ask the City Commission to consider at that time what we call a parameters order, bond sale, and basically you put out the four guardrails, a principal amount of no more than, a final maturity of no longer than, a savings amount of no less than, and an interest rate no higher than. And then that way, we are able to move very quickly in the market, and should, you know, in this particular case, you want to position yourself so that you could access the market as quickly as possible to try to lock in those rates. So what we would do is, if it is the desire of the City Commission, we would work to put a timetable together and coordinate with Mr. Serna to get back to put in place the parameters order. It actually does take a little while, the rating agencies right now, understandably, are extremely busy. So you have, we would have to prepare a disclosure document, the rating agency process takes three weeks. So it would be something, if you give us guidance, we're happy to start laying the foundation, but nothing formal would happen until we got the approval from the city.
And the flip, the flip side of interest rates approaching zero is, is the city's savings account will pay chump change.
That's right.
That's true.
True.
We've been living with that for a long time.
It's going to get chumpier.
It can get a little worse, but it can't get much worse.
Never say those words.
We did not want to respond to that.
Okay. All right, do you want to ask the Commissioner anything else?
That's it.
All right, very good. Thanks, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a safe trip back.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, now we have item number nine, which is consideration possible action to approve a resolution accepting the downtown improvement district budget.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you is the downtown improvement district budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. The budget includes proposed revenues of $243,825 and proposed expenditures of $259,809. The budget has been presented to the downtown improvement board, and staff recommends approval.
So anybody have any questions on the downtown improvement district? Is there a motion to approve the ID's budget, motion?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign the motion carries. Item 10, consideration possible action to approve the selection of the external auditing services.
Thank you, Mayor. The current auditing services for the city contract ends on September 30, 2019. The city's audit committee met on August 28, 2019, to review proposals and to make a recommendation for the city commission's consideration. Staff has recommended approval of the audit committee's recommendation to select CARRIGS Ingram, CRI, and authorize the mayor and city manager to sign the engagement letter for auditing services for the next three years.
Anybody have any questions?
My motion, Phil.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like sign the motion carries. Item 11, consideration possible action to award banking services contract.
Mayor, before the, before we get the presentation, I just wanted to ask if we could consider tabling this item? And the only reason I'm asking is because this is a contract for three years, correct?
Yes, for banking.
Yeah, for the banking services. And so, it says here there was an attachment, but I didn't get to see anything, and so when I asked Dan, he graciously got me the information, but there's a box back there with four binders bigger than ours, that I wanted to kind of look at to compare apples to apples. And so, I was hoping that we could table this for two weeks, just so that way we could see what the contracts looked like and how, I know the staff did it, I'm not saying I'm not going to go with the recommendation, I just wanted to kind of see what was, what was presented.
Is there time?
Yes. Yes, the current contract expires September 30, 2019.
And who went through the binders on staff?
Myself, a senior accountant, as well as we consulted with our investment advisors, Hilltop Securities. We staff reviewed the services offered by each bank, while we use our investment advisors to review the earned credit ratings, as well as the fees assessed by the services that each bank is offering. So it was a combination of...
And they have a recommendation?
Yes, they do. And I'm not saying I don't agree with it, I just wanted a chance to kind of look at some of that, if we had, if I had time. I'm sure I can do it, and anybody else who wants to. I just had some questions and like to review some of the, some of the items, I mean, the binders, to see their, their fees and their, their, their proposals. So I'd like...
Well, you can make a...
I'd like to make a motion.
Make a motion to table if you want.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to table item number 11 to the next City Commission meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll allow us to vote, I'll say.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed?
Opposed.
I oppose.
So what was that?
Three, two.
Were there three ayes?
There were three ayes.
Okay. All right, motion carries. Item 12, consideration possible action to...
I'm sorry, Mayor, but we're going to table it till when? Till the next meeting?
Till the next meeting.
Eighteen.
Well, I'll put it back on. I mean, if the city manager doesn't put it back on, I'll put it back on.
We have, we have to put it back on, our contract expires at the end of the month.
The only reason I'm allowing this is because we're going to just, the next commission meeting, we vote on it. Just give you the opportunity to have a chance to look at it.
Sure, and I appreciate that.
Okay. Item 12, consideration possible action to approve a resolution accepting Valley International Airport, proposed budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Come on up.
Hello, Ron.
Well, first of all, I'm subbing in for Marv. He sends his apologies for not being here, he's actually in DC, working with our advocate on, hopefully get some business. So anyhow, there is slides, but there's not up there. Do you have them in your package? If you do, then I'll just quickly go through this.
Yes.
Okay. Our revenues are increasing 6.8 million from the mid-year up to close to $7 million, so it's $166,000 increase. Buildings are up 41, and it's mainly because we have an existing ARF building, it's the old building, it's now being rented out to the FAA at about $30,000, that's the biggest chunk of it. United Launch Alliance, we do have a contractual increase, it's about $36,000. I have increased parking and rental cars and CFC strictly as a result of increased business that we do have at the airport, as a result of two airlines that were landed last year, that being Frontier and American Airlines. So things are improving here. Gifts and news, we do have a new vendor, which is the same as the vendor that we're using for eat, for our food, and they're called Tailwind, and what we do have is a rental increase in percentage, so it's representing about $32,000 for us. One negative that we do have on the revenue side is on the hangars. We do have a, an existing FBO that has relinquished their building to us, and as a result, we're renting it out on a month-by-month basis, so we're dropping about $38,000 for next, for next fiscal year, I should say. Airline landings, they're down about $17,000. We are keeping our airline rates the same for the next five years, and that's $1.4 for signatory and $1.30 for non-signatory, this is per thousand pounds. But we do have Southwest, they've announced that they've reduced a flight, so I've taken that out. So anyhow, in total, our revenues are up about $166,000. Is there any questions on revenues? Okay, going to expenses then. Our expenses are 6.4 million in the mid-year, and they're going up to about 6.8 million next year, so it's a $460,000 increase. Our salaries and wages are up about $166,000, of which, because of the additional business, we have a requirement to have additional heads, so we have three heads. We do have some turnover with three retirements that are coming, and as a result of that, we will experience some training expenses, bringing in personnel a little bit earlier in order to ensure that they're fully engaged with the position. Benefits are up about $85,000, so that's your FICA, health insurance, workers comp, plus pension obligation, so it's a combination of all those things. Insurances, I put in an increase of approximately 13% plus, it looks very high on here, it's $65,000, but as well as the increase in insurance, because we don't have the FBO at one of these buildings, and we used to charge them for insurance to make sure that it was covered, and I will not be getting that next year, so that's an increase in cost. Ground handling services are going from 207 to 292, so it's up about $85,000. On ground handling, we do handle two full airlines, so that's Frontier and Sun Country, plus we do charters through SWIFT and charters through Sun Country. So what we've decided is, over the last couple of years, things have, have run okay, but not quite as well as we anticipated, so we've had to hire two full-time people, plus we will handle the rest of it, so handling the ramp and the ticket counter, that's all through part-time help. On top of the increase here, we do have Frontier, which came in partway through the year, so they started in late November last year, so there is an annualized effect here, so we have an increase in flights. As far as our personnel for the city, that's a charge from the city that ties into their budget. In fairness, it's not an increase that's showing on here. What I did on the mid-year is, I dropped it too much, shouldn't have done that, and we're actually going to be at around 884. I'm guessing at what August and September will be, so it's not that much of an increase. The next line is our spending. We do have some trucks that are coming off maintenance. As a result, we'll be spending the money on doing repairs as, instead of having it under warranty. On the maintenance side, we do have an increase in $20,000 for the trazo floor. If you've been to the airport, you see on the main floor, there's a brand-new floor in there, so it has to be resealed every year. On top of that, we have a trazo that's going to be put on the second floor, so the concourse level, so we'll have to be redoing that one as well. A brighter note is on the information systems. As a result of these two airlines that we added last year, we had to put infrastructure in. It did cost a significant amount of money, so we think we'll be dropping our IT expenditures by about $45,000, so that's a good one. So in total, we still are in a, in a positive position. We have $177,000 that we're going to bring to the bottom line. So is there any questions on the revenues for operations? Revenues or expenses? Okay, next page.
Anybody have any questions for Ron? And is there a motion to approve the Valley International Airport's proposed budget for 2019, 2020?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign the motion carries. All right, thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item 13, consideration possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to amend the City of Harlingen code ordinances, Chapter 109, subdivisions Article 5, Standards and Specifications, Section 109-124-F, sidewalks to require, sidewalks, to require sidewalks on local streets and perimeter streets, African of the City of Harlingen.
Mayor, City Commission, good evening. We're proposing some amendments to the sidewalk ordinance as part of the subdivision ordinance. Major changes should take care of any, if the ordinance is adopted, there should not be any, any more variances on this subject. The amendments are categorized into five major categories. Amendment, the major category number one is that all streets will require sidewalks. Currently sidewalks are required on major arterial, minor arterial, and major collector streets only. The proposed amendment will also require sidewalks on local interior streets regardless of whether the residential subdivision is within 1,000 feet of a school. This amendment is in your packet. As you know, right now, on residential subdivisions, we only require sidewalks if it's 1,000 feet of a school. This will take care of it, take care of that, we will require sidewalks in all residential subdivisions in the future. Amendment number two, sidewalk requirements are clarified for subdivisions fronting a perimeter street. Sidewalks fronting a perimeter street shall be installed at the developer's expense at the time curb and gutter is installed, or if already there. If the perimeter street has no curb and gutter, the developer shall escrow funds for sidewalks along the boundary of the subdivision. This is an example of a subdivision that was approved a few years ago, this is on the west side of the, of the city along Wilson Road. This subdivision has a perimeter street, which is Wilson Road. If, under these new ordinance, if Wilson Road was, had curb and gutter, we will require the developer to install the sidewalk up front before the subdivision gets recorded. Wilson Road does not have curb and gutter at this time, so we will, in this case, we will require escrow funds instead of building the sidewalks. That way, whenever the street is improved, the city will use those escrow funds to build the sidewalks when, when the street...
Is there a time on the escrow?
No, no timeline. It's whenever the city is ready to be, to improve the street.
And how will you collect escrow?
Excuse me?
How will you collect escrow?
We will require an estimate, an estimate from the project engineer, that is reviewed by the city engineer. Once approved, they will have to give us the funds or a letter of credit, and we will, we will not allow the subdivision to be recorded until those funds are in, in the bank.
Okay, I'm sorry, but you said a letter of credit?
It could be a letter of credit.
So what happens if ten years down the road, the developer that was doing it is no longer in business?
On, on letters of credit, they're normally for one year, so after one year, we, we will cash in the letter of, we will go to the bank and cash it in, and then put, put it in the bank.
And so if he's doing, so again, same question, if he's not in business, how do you, how do you collect?
The, no, the, we will collect it. We, we either get the escrow funds from the developer up front, we get a check, cashier's check, or a letter of credit. The letter of credit is normally a one-year expiration that we, if, before the one year, we will go to the bank, if we don't get the fund, we will go to the bank and cash the check, the letter of credit. Get a check from the bank, and then we deposit in our account.
Again, the question is, if the, if the guy, even within a one year, the developers, because developers come and go a lot, if they go out of business, how do you collect that money?
Is the, the letter of credit...
Because if you're not doing a front, you're going to have a credit. And then out of business, how do you collect?
The bank is, is promising to cash, to cash the...
It's a bank obligation.
Okay, it's a bank's obligation.
It's the bank's risk.
Now, I mean, I don't know, I mean... Now, I mean, I don't know, I mean, it's gonna be hard to get a letter of credit. For the developers, it's gonna be difficult to get a letter of credit for the reason that you just mentioned.
Right.
Because they, because they're gonna, and they're gonna, they're gonna require collateral for the letter of credit in the form of cash or property, or other property that they're satisfied with, that they would be able to collect if they had to pay on the letter of credit. And then they're gonna charge a fee on top of that. I don't, I don't see that hardly ever being used.
It's rare, but.
It's gonna be cheaper for the developer just to put the sidewalk in and get a letter.
And we're talking at the development stage. We're talking at the subdivision stage. So in one year, they're gonna be still in that stage where those properties probably have not been sold. So I kind of agree. I've worked with letters of credit, and you better have really good credit just to even ask for one.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so basically, we will not allow the subdivision to be recorded until we have those funds in the bank or the proper letter of credit. Amendment number three, the installation of sidewalks for lots fronting a local interior street is established. Sidewalks fronting a local interior street shall be required along street fronts and sides of lots at the time of building improvements on the lot. A note on the plot shall be required to this effect prior to subdivision recording. For residential subdivision, sidewalks shall also be installed, install at a minimum of three feet from the street curve or in line with existing sidewalks in the area. And this is basically what most of the cities in the Rio Grande Valley, how those, they require a note on the plot. When the house gets built, that's when the sidewalk gets built at the same time with the house. This is what's different from anywhere else in the, in the Rio Grande Valley. We're proposing escrows to cover gaps. As you know, a lot of subdivisions, you have gaps because people buy a lot and they don't build on it for, for many years. They buy it for the son or for the daughter, or as an investment. So you end up with gaps in the subdivision that could be there ten, twenty, thirty years, and really takes away from the walkability of the, of the neighborhood. So we're proposing to address that. This is a very unique, very innovative, and we're proposing to request escrows in the amount of fifteen percent of the total estimate for the interior streets. And the city will use those escrows approximately ten years later, but it could be sooner, depending on the situation, to fill the gaps. The plan is, whenever the city comes in to do an overlay, the city will use those funds to cover those gaps. And you may ask where the fifteen percent came from, where that figure came from. We did a study, and we inventoried all the subdivisions in Harlingen, recorded since nineteen ninety-nine to twenty-nineteen, with ten lots or more. And for the subdivisions from ninety-nine to twenty, to two thousand nine, which is between ten years and twenty years, we did, we calculated all the lots, and then they built, you know, what percentage of the lots are built on, you know, how many? And this is from the, we got the information from the appraisal district. So on the average, on all the subdivisions in Harlingen, between ten and twenty years old, the percentage built out is eighty-five percent. And that's where we got the fifteen percent from.
Can you go to the prior slide? So we've approved the subdivision, and of course, part of that approval is the interior streets do not need to have a sidewalk until, at the point that they build on it.
Correct.
And I get that. At what point does the subdivider have to come up with the fifteen percent?
Before, like, like the perimeter streets, we will require this before the subdivision gets recorded, the fifteen percent.
So on top of having to build the sidewalks on the main streets, there'll be an automatic fifteen percent at recording of the subdivision for the entire subdivision?
Correct.
Got it. Does any other city in the valley have this?
No, this is, this will be the first city in the Rio Grande Valley, and possibly the state that is addressing the problem of gaps. And we think this will be very effective in addressing the problem.
We're okay with taking the lead on innovative ideas. I think this is a, we've been getting a lot of variance requests where folks don't want to put in sidewalks at all. I think what this does allows them to leave the sidewalks out until they build on the property. To fill in the gaps, at some point, when we overlay the street, this allows the some funds to fill in those gaps. Now, at the point that they fill them in within ten years, if the entire subdivision fills in before the ten-year period, they can ask for the money back, that fifteen percent.
That's where I was going, so. Okay, so we know that an average fifteen percent doesn't get built out. So now, I've created the subdivision with seventy lots. I've given you my fifteen percent. I sold my last lot and built on the last lot. I can walk into City Hall and ask for my money back.
Within the ten-year period.
Is that part of this?
Yes, it could also be sooner. Let's say the subdivision is very successful and it builds out in three years.
Ross?
Yes.
Sure.
But also, we put some language in the ordinance that we could use the funds for maintenance, for repairs.
I saw that.
So, so we, and what's something that the Planning and Sonny, Planning and Sonny Commission recommended is that we adopt guidelines. So our guidelines could say, we're gonna use the funds to cover the gaps or for repairs, and we choose not to return the money. Or we could say, if you, the subdivision is built out, we will give you the money back. So the guidelines is something that we need to work on.
And the book is a hundred percent, or?
It would have to be a hundred percent.
Yeah, it would have to be a hundred percent.
It would have to be.
So there's one lot on there that?
It has to be a hundred percent.
If we have a, if we have less than fifteen percent remaining in, let's say, ten years, I can come to the city and say, we have less than fifteen percent.
No, that's what I just asked, you said a hundred percent.
It, it would have to be a hundred percent.
Yeah, I mean, if it's.
Costs, costs are different. At the time, ten years ago, the cost of sidewalks was much less than it is today.
And the guidelines, have we already developed those guidelines?
No, that's.
What we're gonna use, or we just now?
Well, I need the ordinance to be adapted, to be approved, and then we can work on the, on the guidelines. Now, if it's one or two lots, I guess a developer could go in there and build, build the sidewalks too, to get the money back.
It was one lot.
Put it in.
And that was the other point. So if the developer decided to put all the perimeter, all the sidewalks in at his own expense, once he felt he's at a point of maturity, he can then come back and say, okay, walk, all the sidewalks are done, now I need my fifteen percent back.
This is our attempt at a compromise with developers. And one of the other things is, is this one here, the curb ramps. So a concern that, that I've had, and that I've stressed to staff, is the installation of curb ramps at the time that the plot is approved and, and the curb and gutter is installed. Not necessarily the sidewalks, the curb ramps. That way, folks can still get up off the curb. And so we're gonna require those at the time that the subdivision is planted and the curb and gutter are installed. Those won't be escrows. Those will be constructed at that time.
Just so we can all be clear, we're talking only entire subdivisions, not single lot on this. This is for, how do I record a subdivision? I'm gonna build a subdivision with thirty lots, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions about this?
Yeah, I have one. To Mr. Viall's point, if there is a subdivision, whether it's Adams Crossing or whoever, and they want to build a house, are they required to put the sidewalk? And it's already, it's already plotted, it's existing?
This is for new.
I was gonna wait for his presentation to finish to ask that question, but yes, I was gonna ask.
Javier, go ahead and answer that.
This is for, this is for new subdivisions.
This is for new subdivisions. Moving forward.
Yeah.
Are the ones that are existing, Commissioner, that have a gap, at some point, if we pave that road, we're probably gonna have to fill that gap?
My question is, so this doesn't, last commission meeting, we had somebody that came, wanted, and my proposal was, pay the escrow. The escrow was, the escrow for the full amount of replacement sidewalk, not fifteen percent. So that will continue. We still have that option available to people that want to re, they, they need to replat their, their property. They're in a subdivision that never had sidewalks. I believe you showed that one at the, I forgot what it's called, Pelican's Landing or something like that. They have no sidewalks. So I go there, and I bought two lots, now I want to resubdivide to make it one large lot. So now, the new ordinance says I have to have a sidewalk.
Correct.
And so, but I'm gonna have the only sidewalk in the entire block. So I have the option of doing the escrow, putting it on escrow, and then escrow is a hundred percent because it's just that small lot.
Up until the point that you build a house on that lot.
That's what I'm saying, but I already have a house. This was an existing house on a street with no sidewalks, and so when they replatted it, because they had to resubdivide, it turned out that now the persons had to put in a sidewalk. And we asked for escrow, and that's what the recommendation of this commission was, last commission.
Yes, correct.
And so my question is, this fifteen percent is only for the builder. If a person does one lot, because it's happened, rather than putting a sidewalk, they can do the escrow, but it has to be at a hundred percent of the cost of putting that sidewalk, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I keep looking at Dan, but I need to be addressing.
Okay. So one more question. In a new subdivision, a lot of times, the developer will pre, pre-sell the lots. How do you address that? Because the owner will not be the individual and not the developer. How is that addressed as far as, is it when they record it, when they buy it? How does that, how does that get transferred over to the responsibility of the?
Well, the, the subdivision will have a note on the plot. So this is, this is a subdivision that gets recorded. And on the side, it's gonna have notes. And the note is gonna say, sidewalk to be required during construction. Whoever builds, the builder, the owner.
Right, but you're showing me that they, they pre-sell, like, let's say it's thirty lots, or fifty lots, and they've sold twenty.
But it's in the legal documents.
But, but, and they, they can't pre-sell unless it's been subdivided and recorded.
This is all not required in subdivision.
So it can't be a raw piece of land, because no one knows what size the lots are. Until you know the size of lots, and it's, all that's been planted and recorded, which is when all this kicks in, that's when.
That's what happens, okay.
And I, and I think, I love the idea of the curb ramps going in, right, as a curb and gutter, because that's, that still allows folks to get up into the area.
And certified, and certified by an ADA consultant, we will also require that. And that way, we'll not, we will not have any ADA issues with those subdivisions, because the ramps will be built correctly from the beginning. And so we're gonna have a document in the subdivision file saying, these ramps are certified by a licensed ADA consultant, which makes it a lot easier later on.
I'd like to ask the city attorney to read the caption out.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, Chapter 109, Subdivisions, Article Five, Standards and Specifications, Section 109-124-F, sidewalks, to require sidewalks on local and perimeter streets, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Can we have Ms. Murray here to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so, too, man.
See him coming back.
We'll wait to return the commission, Ms. Murray. Here he is.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion to approve?
The second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
By the way, we, we also mapped all the, since we inventoried all these subdivisions for the last twenty years, we went ahead and mapped them. So you have growth, pretty much all the yellows are the new, the subdivisions recorded in the past twenty years. So you have a good distribution, north, south, east, and west, so that's good.
Good information.
That was a cool map.
Okay. Item fourteen is consideration of possible action to approve the preliminary and final plant of the proposed Sun Country subdivision with conditions and consider a variance request for the perimeter streets sidewalk requirements as per Section 109-124-F five, bearing a legal description of thirty-eight-point-two-oh-two acres of land out of Block Thirteen, Harlingen Water Company, Subdivision C, located on the north side of Lafayette Avenue, west of Chester Park Road, applicant Ariel Chavez of CADC on Corporation, care of Beatriz Castellanos.
This subdivision has a fifteen-year history. Just very briefly, it was first processed in October of two thousand and four by the Planning and Sonny Commission. Road and utilities were installed in, back in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, but they didn't finish the process, unfortunately. The property was annexed in two thousand, September two thousand and five. The subdivision was processed again in March of twenty seventeen, but again, they did not finish the process. Major repairs were done to the streets and the utility lines, and the, the streets and the water and sewer lines have been approved by engineering and the Harlingen Water Works. The perimeter streets on the south side Lafayette and on the west side Ramsey Streets are still in the county. This is a location map, over here is Lafayette, Chester Park, and it has a boundary of Ramsey to the west, Wilson to the north. And there's an area, so those streets have, as you know, have been there many years, and they're trying to get the subdivision recorded. Views of the subdivision, this one from Lafayette, and this one from Ramsey, that they're proposing to record. These are the ones in light green are the buildable lots, and then what's in red are non-buildable lots. They're proposing to have all the streets recorded at the same time with a utility segment, but these are the only lots that will be buildable at this time because the drainage is in place. For the rest of the area, the drainage is not in place, so they'll have to do some drainage improvements in order to, to move on with the rest of the subdivision. But they're proposing to record, to record all the streets at this time. Thirty-two buildable lots. There is a list of conditions in your pocket of everything that still needs to be done. One of them is the curb ramps, as we mentioned earlier, and they, I think they already started the process, and they have agreed to build all the curb ramps upfront. There is a variance request, and this is for the perimeter sidewalks. Instead of having to escrow one-hundred percent of the perimeter sidewalks, they're proposing to escrow fifteen percent, and they're proposing a note on the plot that whenever a house gets built along those boundaries, that they, a sidewalk will be required in the front and in the rear. Staff recommends this approval of the, well, approval of the plot with the conditions and this approval to the variance request is not, is not in line with the ordinance that you just approved. And Planning and Sonny Commission also recommends approval of the subdivision, but denied the variance request for the perimeter sidewalks.
Was everybody clear on that?
Yes.
Okay.
I like the motion, the same.
The preliminary.
We're gonna approve the flat, but we're not gonna approve the variance.
For the preliminary.
Which means, which means, he's gonna have to put fifteen in escrow for the perimeter, for the interior, and he has to build out the perimeter.
Escrows, escrows for the perimeter.
Oh, escrow, because there is no.
Curb and gutter.
Curb and gutter.
Correct, yes.
And this is basically, so their entryway to the subdivision is off Lafayette, is that the main?
They have an entrance on Lafayette, and they also have an entrance over here on Ramsey.
Got it.
And so the land in pink or red, that's county property or is that city property?
No, the entire, the entire subdivision is inside the city.
Okay.
The, these roads, and these roads are still in the county, but the city could annex them if the city desires. They're proposing to have all of these streets recorded at this time, but these are the only buildable lots.
Okay, so.
Because the drainage is in place, so later in the future, they're planning to do drainage improvements to complete the other phases.
Okay, so then the red properties, they need to have further capital improvements to make it possible.
The drainage.
To sell the home, the lots for homes.
But that's the developers.
That's the developers.
The streets are in place, are approved, the water and sewer lines are in place and approved, there's just the drainage that is pending for the area in red.
Okay. So the staff's recommendation is to approve the. So, the staff's recommendation is to approve the preliminary and final plan of the proposed Sun Country subdivision with conditions, and to deny the variance requested.
Yes.
And that's what the, and that's what the Planning and Zoning Commission did, so.
That's my motion.
That's a motion, a motion to accept the staff's recommendation. There's a second by Commissioner Liao. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item fifteen, consideration possible action to approve the naming of the Mountain Bike Trail as Henry Roberts' Loop, in memory of Mr. Henry Roberts.
Yes, Mayor, City Commissioner, good afternoon. We placed this item on the agenda at the request of the Mayor's Wellness Council, and it's been discussed at several of our meetings, but the, you all recall when, when the property was donated by Elkins, Mr. Roberts approached the city and suggested that we turn that property into a mountain bike trail. And so, soon after that, he got, he fell ill, and several of the volunteers that he was working with continued to work out there and worked with our staff, and so, we built out several, about two miles of trail that we cleared, and is now open. The entire project, it was a six-point-two-mile trail, and so, we're continuing to work on those trails and those clearing of that area. But anyway, the, the request was that if we could name the trail inside of the property as Henry Roberts' Loop, and so, we, the Mayor's Wellness Council voted on it, and they made a recommendation to bring to the City Commission.
I'm motion for an approval.
Second.
Any other discussion?
He got the second.
Okay, motion to second. Any other discussion? This is a great, this is a great idea, wonderful way to honor Henry Roberts and his family. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item sixteen is consideration possible action to authorize our armed police department to auction off a total of eight motor vehicles in a one-trailer, two generators, using govdeals.com auction website. Chief?
Mayor, Commissioners, as you might recall, a couple months ago, we brought a list of vehicles to auction off on GovDeals. In that time, we had the flood event in which several of the vehicles we were planning on auction off were damaged and subsequently totaled by the insurance. So, we went ahead and resubmitted the list, had to add a couple more vehicles to it and a couple generators, but we're just asking for permission to go ahead and sell off this surplus equipment.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item seventeen is board appointments.
I have none.
I have none.
None.
Got it.
Okay. I have Jennifer Colton to the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed, motion carries. You wanna do that, Jennifer? Okay, item nineteen, okay, we're gonna go item nineteen, these communications are.
Amanda.
Oh, yes. Let me see where I left my list. Robert Mettwich, tax increase and budget. I guess he left. Ron Lozano, same thing, Mayor, tax increase and budget, but they're not here.
Okay, they're not here. Okay. Item eighteen, consideration, executive closed session, Texas government code, Section five, one, one oh seven, one two, state legal advice regarding certain bills of the any six, legislature affecting Texas Open Meat Act. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed, motion carries. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it will be an executive session, just receiving legal advice from our attorney. There'll be, there are no other items on the agenda.